Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first topic is a human resources budget presentation. The floor is all yours. How long have you been officially on the job?
This is day seven.
Day seven, and you're presenting the entire budget, ready to go.
Right. Here we go. Without my right hand, Dr. Green, so thank you, Dr. Green, she's here with me, just in case we come up with any obstacles I can have an answer to.
So Mr. Dufran, I'm going to interrupt you real quick. So those watching on TV that don't necessarily know who this is, this is Mr. Ryan Dufran, he's our new assistant for Human Resources and has, as Tara mentioned, has done the job for like a week.
Yeah.
And already doing a budget presentation, a lot of which was prepared before you got here.
That is correct.
Got it down here without us?
Yeah, without the help of my team, so I appreciate it. So let's get started. We always want to start with a why, so this is a great quote. Teachers in every classroom who cares about every student, every day, learns and grows and feels like a human being. Now, while I started as a teacher, my wife's a teacher, I'm also aware that there's more opportunities for us as a school district to touch students, so we included our bus drivers and our instructional assistants and our secretaries, and keep going and going, right? We all have an opportunity to make a positive impact on our students. This is a 10,000 overview of my team. Includes everything from employment management, who does everything from hire to retire, professional learning and development, professional standards, and HR management. Some of the things we use our budget for. Staffing, of course, district drug-free policies, the BPS surveys, the annual feedback. We even use the salaries that are paid for our employees by BPS but reimbursed back by district FDA. The staff survey contract with TNP, T-N-T-P, excuse me, but at this time, we haven't renewed that policy. We're looking for a better platform that can encompass all three. Parent surveys, student surveys, and staff surveys, do it all under one platform, make it make sense. I can give this to you, I don't know if it's too small there to read, but I can give it to you if you need it. Just going to kind of touch on the big numbers. The 1,000 for professional and technical consultants. That includes a contract for shredding bans and administrative advertisements. Any travel that's done is going to be for meetings directed by the superintendent for any HR executives across the region. We also do drug and alcohol testing. We just engaged a new platform, it's called Edge Information Management. It's got a chain of custody form, has a barcode, we used to use those carbon copy papers where, you know, if you didn't press hard enough, the final one, you couldn't even read it. So this is just an upgrade. We've also moved to the substitute management system, it's called Red Rover. Got some great feedback on that as well. Again, we're trying to move away from a lot of paper-based items. Bring us back into the 21st century. This slide is going to show the TNP, T-N-T-P inside survey, which I mentioned earlier. It has not been renewed. Again, the intent is to move it under one platform that handles all three of the surveys. So for professional standards and labor relations, this is Dr. Green's department. This is all the people who work under Dr. Green. They include everything from compensation to position allocations, leaves, retirement, things of this nature. These are our general fund uses, again, with labor relations, professional standards, retirement, leaves. This is our budget, which I kind of focus on compensation services and is a new department this year. It's a new department, but the work's not new, right? The people aren't new, what they do isn't new, we just put it under a new cost center. Position of six people, a lot of computer money is up for upgrading and refreshing of computers because right now, the ones we have, they just can't handle load. So that's what that's for. This is our millage cost center. Obviously, it's under construction, we're still trying to, we just recently hired people for this. The work will begin there in July. The budget is under construction, we're going to provide things like salaries, supplies, computers, but of course, we'll be making cost-conscious decisions when we fund that. This is the 9420 labor relations. The travel budget is going to include our FEN that we go to, the Florida Education Negotiators, they meet about four times a year. We're really lucky, two of those are local enough where we can just go there and back, we don't have to stay overnight, so that's a bonus. Any sort of professional dues for FEN, labor law arbitrators, SHRM, these types of things are under this budget. We also do tuition reimbursement, it's negotiating with the BFT. It stays the same whether we use it or not, every year it's a negotiated item, so this number's going to stay the same. And so that's why sometimes you'll see the numbers will stay the same, but actual usage changes. Questions? Good. Alright, so the additional budget request for professional, excuse me, for Dr. Green. We're going to request some funds to deploy a non-bargaining salary adjustment. The proposal has been submitted to Ms. Lozinski and Dr. Rendell for review and possible implementation. We can either do it as a phase-in, or we can do it as a one-time, let's knock it out. But that proposal is in, it's submitted, and we'll see what happens. On professional learning and development, this is Mr. Mike Alba's team. Mike is enjoying some well-needed vacation this week. I think he's celebrating his 20th anniversary three years later. His 20th was during, if I'm saying this right, was during 2020. And, you know, got delayed, and 2021's still not traveling too much, and so he's celebrating his 20th anniversary, so I'm glad he's out having a time to relax with his beautiful bride. But so they cover leadership training, aspiring leaders training, any of the recruitment and retention certifications, things that are state mandated. Again, what their general fund uses, it's all supporting teachers, okay? It's all supporting teachers. Help them train, mentor. They also pay for substitutes when they have PD at the, when they have PD at the schools. We'll pay for substitutes for the schools, so we can get their teachers training. These are recruiting and retention budget. The salaries for these recruiters, we have two district recruiters, and 6% of one recruiter's position is paid through Title II funds. So again, we're trying to be budget-conscious when we fund these things. The rest of the budget on this page is, you know, just supporting recruitment, events, advertisements, any sort of platforms we use, like EdWeek and Circa, register for various affairs, create banners, things like this. Again, the salaries budget here for professional learning staff and peer mentors. We provide mentor trainings for principals as well. Again, like I said earlier, professional learning and development supports schools and training initiatives. With that, we have money provided to schools for subs, like I said earlier. We use different screening tools like Humex, HumanX, excuse me, it's a profiler, kind of sets up leadership. There's a big ticket cost item here I want to draw your attention to, I'm sure everybody sees, the $180,000. That's the evaluation platform called Frontline. We were, as I said, we were changing out of that, this was a contract board approved on March 28th. So we knew about it. It's an evaluation and it's a system, it's a PD system. If I'm a teacher and I'm curious of how many ESC points I need, I can go on this system, look, it'll tell me exactly, you know, how many points I need, how many points I'm short, when the next trainings are. If I want to sign up for a training, I can do it right there by myself, I don't, you know, I don't need to contact HR, I don't know. It's a great system, it's a great system. So thank you for funding that. Again, this is profiler for leadership at HumanX, Oasis, all the same budget. Okay, the big asks for Mike's group. They asked me, they tried to talk me into asking me for 10, but I talked them into four. We have peer mentor teachers. What these peer mentor teachers do, they go into classrooms and help brand-new teachers teach, right? A lot of our, so we had about 900 last year, first and second-year teachers, okay? 900 across our district. Of that, about 480 of them, so more than half, never went through a certification at a school to see an internship in a classroom, right? Some of these, I'll take my own experience, right? When I started teaching, I had not been in a classroom for 20 years, right? I graduated high school and that's all I knew. And when it's time for me to teach, I'm standing in front of a classroom, and I'm doing it like they did 20 years ago, right? We're going to be running into that a lot. I think our teachers deserve to be mentored, to have our peer mentor teachers with them side by side. We currently have three to cover our entire district. The request is four more. You can see the base salary and the total request for that there. I told them, I told Mike, if we do this and I get it approved, we have to show that it was worth it, okay? We're going to try to move more to a retention-based, instead of recruiting-based. Right now, a pretty heavy recruiting base, trying to get 900 teachers every year is a big ask. Everyone knows, not a lot of people are going into education these days. That's just a fact that everybody's got to realize. So the ones, the 900 we do get, let's keep them. Let's put them in a position to be successful. So that's the ask. The last budget slide is everything here that was in my budget that's over $500. If you have any questions, I can absolutely answer them, and if I can't, hopefully Dr. Green can. But that's kind of summarized, and that's the last of my presentation, if I'm here for any questions.
I have one. So in this, I'm going to ask this to Dr. Green, just because I think that, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this is you or her, but this presentation was done through 12/31/22 is what the dates are on a lot of these, is that? I guess my ask would be just why, because most of the other presentations that came before us were through like the end of May or the end, wherever they were delivering that presentation. So has it been looked at or updated since then? Because obviously, some of the numbers are going to be drastically different, which I don't know where Dr. Green, right there, I'm like looking in the back.
This is, this was the information that was provided to us from budgeting when we went through our budget process. We did not get updated, we haven't received our updated budget yet, that's why everything is in draft form. So the only thing you're seeing are the expenditures through 12/31.
Okay.
But the asks are, yeah, the asks are the same.
Okay, and then one of, one of the things on here, and this just could be timing, and so I'm not sure. On page seven for the employee physical, that's like reduced by almost $40,000. And I'm just curious as to what we've spent in the past and what we've spent now. Is that because most of physicals don't happen until the summer, or is it, timing-wise, on page seven is where it's at? Are we stopping doing that, or?
I can't, I can tell you what we use physicals for, since that comes out of the main HR budget, I can't exactly tell you where the planning was, timing is. But our budget, physicals are for, like our pre-employment, for bus drivers, custodians, things like that. And I know they were trying to provide a budget that was commensurate with what we have used over the years.
Okay, well, it's just, it looks like as of that date, we've used 27,000 of it, but we've allocated 65,000? Oops, my mic's off again. And so, just curious on why the change there, and I know one of the things that I had heard from, I guess risk management is now our, our staff is going to be asked to do physicals on an ongoing basis, I believe, was my understanding from one of the meetings that took place, and so I thought, is this?
That's different.
That's?
The interns.
Okay.
The interns trust that.
So this would be just for new hire physicals? And so that number could be reduced because we haven't hired as many people, is that why?
It could be, or it could be because it's summer. So are you, are you looking at expenditures, I'm really not sure.
Yeah, so it's, page seven of this.
Can we get you on my slide?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's expenditures.
So if it's expenditures, you're only looking at the first half of the year? Because it's only through 12/31.
Yeah.
Maybe what you're seeing is that in the past years, the actuals for employee physicals under the drug and alcohol testing was budgeted at 68, or actuals, and then this year was only budgeted 27,000.
I know exactly what you're talking about, it's drug and alcohol. So we used ESTER funding for the drug and alcohol testing, and that ESTER funding is going away, so we have to recoup that back into our budget.
But we'll have it for another year, so that's why it's still low?
I don't know that we have it for the whole year coming up. I, we can find that out for you.
So it's kind of, it's kind of reversed. What it looks like is in the past years, we've spent more, and then when you get to 2023, what we've adopted was that 27,000 versus 65,000 last year. So that's the only reason, I was just asking, why is it so different? And is it because we're not doing them, or is it because?
We haven't changed, I'm sure it has to do with ESTER funding, but I'll have to check.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Green?
So, Mr. Dufran, I apologize if you can't ask this question.
I know. You're in the hot seat.
I, I'm not going to judge you, I promise. But before I ask my question, actually, I just, you know, I want to say, the number-one priority for this school district is, is and should be retention, right? And so I hear you on that. I'm excited that they're asking for four peer mentors, but I'm with Mr. Alba, I think, I think we need more. I just, I think that should be a priority going forward for this board. I appreciate you, you know.
I didn't want to swing, I didn't want to swing for the fence on my basics, right?
But I think this board should consider that to be a top priority, because our new teachers really, really, really need that support, and if we want to keep them around, I mean, we'll have to keep looking for new ones, we should, we should make that a priority. So my question is about the tuition reimbursement for BFT. So can you just kind of explain to us what exactly is that used for? Is that for our current teachers who are looking for advancing their certifications or their qualifications? Or is this for the IA to teacher track?
It could be for any of that, because we have it for all three, we have it for BFT, 10-10, and non-bargaining people. And if they're working on certifications or improvement in their job, they can apply for tuition reimbursement. And they have to, you know, put it, put forth what they're going to, what they've taken the classes for, final transcripts, bills, in order to get reimbursed, and it's first come, first served.
Okay.
So we almost always get close to that BFT top line. We have not always reached the top lines of 10-10 and non-bargaining, but again, there are amounts that have been set for years and years and years. So we still budget for those amounts, and then it's remaining if they don't use it all.
That's, that's a bargain amount as well.
So I, I have an ask, because I know we've talked about this behind closed doors a lot, too, about, you know, really trying to dig deep within the people and personnel that we have here at BPS to advance them, to fill the voids that we have. So if we can, you know, again, kind of put a focus and a priority on maybe relaying that information to our staff a little bit, because our staff is constantly changing, and there's so many new, just so that they're aware that that opportunity exists for them. Because again, we have amazing IAs in our classroom, and don't get me wrong, I know we still need so many more of them. But it would be really great to tap some of those incredible resources that we have in that classroom to provide them an opportunity to potentially become classroom teachers as well. Thanks.
I think that's an awesome initiative that we can also work with BFT to communicate with. Yes?
Yeah, I've got just a few, few things I want to talk about. So first of all, thank you guys for getting this ready for us and being willing to spearhead it on day seven. So Red Rover was a, was a huge deal, and I, I would love to see in the future some, like, we've, it's been a while since we've had a substitute fill presentation, and Red Rover, this type thing, was one of the ones that was discussed. So it'll always be impossible to know, because I feel like this year, our fill rates were better. I feel, I have this feeling, because we, in the past, we've had people come and talk about the sub situation in crisis for about three years.
Correct.
We won't know, was it going up to $15 an hour, or was it the Red Rover? But I would like some data, in the future, if you could give us a presentation, I'd be on a workshop sometime, Dr. Rendell, of just where were we this past year with our substitute fill rates and with the schools that were more in crisis before? Are we seeing improvement there, so we kind of know how to move forward in the future?
So the Red Rover is more of a ease-of-use?
Right.
Right, okay.
But it, but it's, sometimes it affects fill rates just because you're kind of taking that where anybody can go on and see them. I mean, still, people have to put it in there.
Sure.
But you don't have to rely on the phone calls and whatever. And I, I know, I even put it on, because I was helping with some subbing at the beginning of the school year. It was so easy to use, and I could go in and say, oh hey, I really just want a half-day job, and I could go anywhere in the district and look for a half-day job. It was great.
That's the goal of the system, right? Is just make it ease-of-use and try to get more subs to do that type of thing. I have a half-day this day, let's do this Tuesday. Okay, look, here's an opportunity.
Right, so if anything that we can do to make it easier, that is, that is helpful. So I appreciate the, looking at the survey platforms, trying to go put that all in one, I think that will be helpful, and again, easier. I wanted to go back to a slide, there was a slide that we talked about, it was an ask, it was the first ask page, what page was that? Oh, slide 16 about the non-bargaining salary adjustments to resolve equity gaps.
Yes.
So I, I was a little confused because then it starts talking about BFT 10-10, the adjustments, unintended consequences, and compression. So this, this is really, this is just non-bargaining, right? This, you're asking for, so that we can make some adjustments to the non-bargaining, whether it be administrators or?
Correct, but I'm going to let Dr. Green speak to that, because that's.
I mean, I know this is a big problem, I'm just trying to figure out exactly. So, non-bargaining compensation hasn't been addressed in the same way that 10-10 and BFT compensation has been addressed. There were, they also went through the, and when we talk about non-bargaining, you're talking about anybody from the cabinet-level positions to, all the way through to admin assistants, cafeteria managers, BAS coordinators. There are 850 non-bargaining personnel. And they also went through four years of compression with no raises. Every time we address BFT and 10-10, we adjust their salary schedule. The non-bargaining salary schedule has not been adjusted through, since 2016, so. That's like the place, speaking specifically about like the placement. It's everything included. There's several different points of, of interest throughout the entire study. And it looks at each salary grade, and it does an assessment at each salary pay grade and where the outliers lie. We've done leapfrogging for BFT on two different occasions. So part of it's placement, but part of it is also the schedule itself, and the fact that it's not keeping up with its counterparts across the state as well as what's happening in 10-10, I'm sorry, BFT and 10-10. So here's one perfect example. We have two really main points of problem within, like, big, the most outlier, if you look at a statistical review of it. One of them is the 10-month AP. So we have people leaving the classroom, coming into the 10-month AP position and losing money. Because again, we've raised BFT, every time, you know, we adjust their salary schedule, every time they get a raise. We never adjust the salary schedule for non-barg, so there's a floor. And there's a daily rate, and we try and, and fix those sorts of things. So you, you will hear people in the hourly groups of non-bargaining say to you that if they came in from the outside, as opposed to get promotions from inside, they'd make so much more, because we, we do treat people differently inside and, and coming from the outside. So there's a, there's many steps throughout the whole process. And we've been working on it slowly over the last several years. I think we made one adjustment to a director level back in 2020, maybe, and we haven't made any adjustments since then. So we, that's one of our asks. I very much appreciate that, and I figured it related to those conversations that we've had before, and it's a huge job to tackle, and I'm glad you guys are tackling it, so thank you. And then, I appreciate also, just the last point, really of the comment, I understand the four mentor, I also think every time we pull a mentor teacher out of the classroom, that's one more spot we have to fill. So I appreciate the four, and trying to kind of find a middle road, which will bring us to seven, which is not going to be ever enough, right?
Right.
But, but will help, and I, but I appreciate your comment about we're having to show that it's worth it. Because if we're going to pull teachers out of the classroom to be mentor teachers, it's, there's definitely a need, but we want to be able to show the public and the teachers and, you know, anywhere in the district, that, that sacrifice was, was worth it. And so I appreciate that, and it's, can be very subjective, but I appreciate that you guys are going to do that, because I think that'll be important for us to be able to explain why we do what we do.
Mr. Trepp?
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
And, you know, that's quite good for being here a week, you know? I'm sure there's help behind, so we just, we just look forward to having you here and, and try to get some, you know, summer in, but I know you're working lots, and we just look forward to all we have to see from the whole HR, so thank you.
Thank you. That's right, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. I have mine, yeah, thank you.
So I just had some things that I just wanted to go through that we've had discussions with and just kind of bring it up. One of the things that we found, and there was a presentation by a couple of superintendents about a year and a half, two years ago, that talked about homegrown talent and people who are from here, right? And it talks about the dividends that are there, so like, people who are from here that went to school here, also, if they're employed here, stay here longer. Sure. So there's a longevity there. So when we're talking about recruitment and some of those things, we had just discussed earlier about going after people who had previous educational certificates and a lot of those other components that we can target. My wife's in a mom's group where there are a lot of former educators that could definitely come back. They're at that place where they're ready, right? One of the things that they were fearful about was the discipline issues and some of the stuff that we're correcting. So I, I wanted to work on those things. When I talk about these next couple of things, what I think is, we can give you a consensus from the board that these are the highest-level topics and issues. If you need the funding, you get it, right? Because we don't want teachers that are not inside the classrooms. We don't need recruit, you know what I mean, does that make sense to you? So it's not a matter, when I talk to some of the people about the four or the 10, it's not so much a matter of like having the 10. The issue is, is that you can't hire 10 people, because there's just not enough people to fill those positions. So I'm okay going up to the 10, knowing that they may not get filled, but that's one thing. But I did want to say, Dr. Rendell and I talked about this extensively, and he had talked about, he has some ideas inside this space that we can utilize people at different places. So I, Dr. Rendell, I guess in that respect, whatever your plan is for that moving forward, I think we as a board would say, whatever that funding needs are to get those, we're there to support that. Can I kind of give them that thumbs up, you guys?
I have to know exactly what you're asking.
I understand, but consensus-wise, when, I think we have a very big need for that. The other thing is, is that, Dr. Rendell, you had talked about traveling to other states and sending messages out to people. Can you kind of give that a little bit, real quick?
Yeah, so thank you, so first of all, that's a budget request that they put on our list of budget requests, so we will come back to you with a list of all those budget requests, and so that would be the time where you can say, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Go forward for that kind of thing. Yeah, in other districts, there's an aggressive recruiting practice of visiting states up north, especially in the middle part of the year, the winter, to go to Michigan, to New York, to Wisconsin, and try to lure teachers to either retire or just leave the teaching profession up there to come down to Florida. So we're looking at some of those practices to see if we can join in on that in the future. We want to talk to some districts who are doing that to make sure, again, that there's a return on the investment. You know, if you're sending a recruiting team up there, how many teachers are you really gathering? You know, is it really worth the investment? So what we want, to go ahead and start to recruit outside the state of Florida, to try and see if we can bring some, some quality teachers in, into Brevard.
Yeah, and so that everybody understands that includes the retiring military. It includes kids coming out of college. It includes the ones that are in, you know, that are already in existence and, and teaching in different educational environments. The other piece to it is, is that us going and saying, hey, come to Brevard is one thing, but the EDC, I think you had mentioned it before, I've been talking to them about their image and attraction for like the Space Coast in general. Some of those videos that we put together through the EDC from years ago are targeted at just our Space Coast, right? Like, I think they called it launches and loggers, where like for launch dates, people would go and go to the local breweries. Like, I think they called it launches and loggers, where like, for launch dates, people would go and go to the local breweries, you know what I mean? And those kind of things start to attract people to say, hey, there is a cool culture. It's not mill boring, right? It is a good place to go to. So I think that those, like, combining all of our efforts together.
Sure.
With the Economic Development Council and everybody else, because they have a definite need in us succeeding, I think is amazing. And I want to say thank you, Dr. Rundell, for thinking outside the box and talking about that with me. The other thing is, is that we should be able to work with our communications department, and I don't know if there needs to be funding for that, but to tell the story about who we are, because we're unique. Like, I go, when I was over in the Florida School Board Association Conference, a lot of the school board members tell me, they're like, you guys have such a gem, such a unique school district, and the fact that you're launching, you have all these capabilities, you have space, you have all that stuff. And so if there's a way for us to tell that story, not only to attract them from around our area and around the state, but then also the story about us, like, we've gone through and reworked our discipline, we've given raises to certain individuals. We care about our people, and telling that story would attract the locals back. So I think that those are just some of the points that I wanted to bring up. And are we looking at like, experience bonuses, like sign-on? Like, if a teacher has five or 10 years in a different district, and we would like them, would we be willing to? Dr. Rundell, have you ever heard about signing bonuses for that kind of stuff? Are you working on that?
It's not on the table right now. We can add it to the list. I think we've done a good job of placing them, you know, granting years of experience. Years ago, we did not, and so we've kind of moved to where we can be more competitive. So when you come in, you can get some of that years of experience. I don't know if Dr. Green wants to speak to that, but we haven't thought about signing bonuses. Again, we don't want to create any...
Inequities?
Inequities with the stuff that we already have.
Here's my thing, if we're targeting a fifteen to twenty-year veteran that has great experience in another school district, saying that we have the equal pay, and we do disciplines, one thing. But if there's a way to recruit in another outside the box, maybe not even that, then, I don't know. I'm just thinking about it, that's all.
Just as a quick reminder on that topic, though, I mean, when we negotiated the milage increase for BFT, they are going to be able to include all their experience of teaching from anywhere that they may have it, to determine what their milage supplement will be, so that's a positive.
Yeah, I think that's great. I'm just saying, like, to attract them to come, there's always that extra, you know what I mean? That's all, just a thought. And then one of the issues I wanted to bring up, now that we have the opportunity, is the substitutes that have less than like thirty or forty hours of service get kicked off the system. Is there, I've had a couple of them reach out to me and say, hey, I didn't make my thirty because I was sick, or whatever it is. Are we able to give a variance to that, or are we just kicking them off? Okay, so anybody who...
They need to contact us.
Yeah, just make the phone call to us, and we can make that happen. Okay, good, all right. And then, one of the things you were talking about with discipline that I found, I just wanted to talk to it, is, or one of the things you were talking about substitutes and what was successful and what wasn't successful. And a lot of the people that were substitutes were choosing schools based upon if they felt like they were secure in their discipline. So I think that might be one of the things that you find, is that some of the substitutes didn't want to, you know, they didn't want to take the chance on their careers by going into a school that they didn't feel safe in. So that was one. And then the other thing that I noticed with the report that I was reading is location availability. A lot of times we sit there and the people are saying, well, this, you know, like, Manatee Elementary has so many substitutes. One of the reasons is, is there's a lot of people that live in the local area that are stay-at-homes, and they have, you know what I mean? They're not working at the time. So many of your blue collar, hardworking areas, which is like the O'Gally Corridor area, they struggle, some of them, for substitutes, because their families are all working, like, the moms and dads and everybody are working. So, and even the grandparents are working into later years. So there's an opportunity for us to take some of those subs from those other locations, have them meet the principals, then we might be able to fill some of that stuff. So I just wanted to follow up the conversation with you when you were talking. And that's it, man, it's just an area that I really care about, so thank you.
Thank you.
One more thing that I forgot to talk about. Again, we've talked about this a lot behind closed doors, especially when we're having bargaining conversations. And I know that we did make specific updates to job descriptions to talk about job sharing options for some of our teachers, especially our elementary classrooms. So I just, I'm just requesting again that we kind of bring that to the forefront of our minds to possibly make an intentional effort to advertise that, even on Facebook and things of that nature with GCR, because I really think we can fill some of our elementary positions if we're just putting that out there. I know, obviously, we would prefer a full-time teacher, but we know the reality of a lot of our schools that have been vacant for a long time. It might be more palatable to some of our, you know, teachers who have left to raise their kids, to just step back in for a part-time position who may not need those benefits or willing to share, vice versa. So if we could just bring it to the forefront and like, push that more intentionally, not just on the job description and on the application itself on Beacon, I would really appreciate that, I think we would see some benefits.
It's a great point, Ms. Jenkins. I think the other thing is, not many people know that there are some good statistics that show that actually having the two teachers working gives the students actually a different look at different parts of curriculum, gives them a refresh. So that's awesome, so thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else have any topics? Good? Do you have anything that you want to talk to us about?
Mr. Trent, you go over there?
Yeah, sure.
He's got some things, you good?
I'm good.
Thank you, sir, for that update. Next topic's Educational Plant Survey, please. Ms. Suhann and Ms. Black, you guys coming up to the front? Jane, do you want my chair?
Sorry, I gotta put this one down. They had me leaning right.
Mine are way high, too.
I was putting below.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Ms. Black, how are we doing today?
Good, how are you?
I just want to say thank you again for your dedication to the Viero redistricting. You did an amazing job, and thank you for all your work in that space.
I love what I do. So, good morning. My name is Karen Black, I'm the manager of Facilities Planning. I have a brief overview of the Educational Plant Survey to go over with you this morning. The Educational Plant Survey is a mandatory document the district must submit to the Department of, to the Florida Department of Education to comply with Florida statutes. Once the survey is approved by the board and the Florida Department of Education, it remains in effect for five years. The purpose of the survey is to comply with Florida statute, having the Department of Education review and validate planned and potential facility needs on a school-by-school basis, which may be initiated with state funding. The survey includes an existing inventory of facilities, recommendations for each facility, existing and new facilities, which may be state-funded, projected COFT, the capital-outlay full-time equivalent student enrollment prepared by DOE. And in association with the survey, the district also is required to submit a CTE, an Adult Education Program Facility Needs List, for five years. That form has already been submitted and is previously approved with the DOE. In the past, when the district received a much higher amount of state funding, the survey may have been more comprehensive, including a better overview of the district's long-range plan. However, since much of the district's funding now comes from local sources, the survey may not reflect the full scope of work planned at each school. A survey recommendation is not required when the district uses local funding sources. For example, they have sales tax or impact fees. The bottom of this slide shows an example of the recommendation report table as it's printed in the EdPlant survey. The first three categories are primarily used for new construction. And most of the district's recommendations will be categorized under site improvement, remodeling cost, and renovation cost for existing facilities. I've included some screenshots of the DOE system to help explain what may be included in each category. Site development. In this category, you'll see, it's an example, in this example, it's a new construction for sidewalk replacement. But this is called, this category is cost associated with developing a new site for use. The site improvement category includes a combination of district recommendations, including calls for additional covered walkways, additional parking spaces, changes to traffic circulation for parent pickup and drop-off, correcting drainage issues. This category also includes other expenditures, not defined in any of these given categories, such as roofing repair and security. Remodeling cost is used when you're changing existing spaces that are in FISH. So in this example, changing like, room one fifty-one into two spaces. So remodeling is used when you're changing or adding walls to physically change the existing rooms in FISH, changing use codes and/or the number of student stations associated with that space. So in this example, the result is, you're changing room one fifty-one, which is currently coded as senior high open, high, senior high open plan, from fifty student stations to two ESC spaces, for a total of thirty-two student stations. Renovation costs. Renovation costs are provided for each facility based on facility renewal and educational technology projected cost. At each facility, renovation costs, including painting, floor cover, electrical, plumbing, windows, lighting, restroom renewal, HVAC systems, fire alarms, bell systems, and, excuse me, educational technology projected costs are all covered in this category. Before I go onto the slide, I want to add that in addition to the listed recommendations for each facility, Florida statute includes some district-wide recommendations for each facility, which include repairs relating to safety, health, sanitation, and accessibility, to name a few, that are not required to be listed individually for each facility. Cost estimates for these district-wide recommendations are not included, but are made on a district-wide basis at each facility. The complete list of these items is found on page two sixty-one of the survey. Student membership. The Department of Education sets projected COFT by grade level. So you'll see PK through three is eighteen thousand six hundred and fifty-four students, projected for year twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Grades four through eight is twenty-three thousand two hundred and thirty, and grades nine through twelve is eighteen thousand three hundred and sixty-five, for a total of sixty thousand two hundred and twenty-two projected students. The district sets these, the projected COFT by grade level, which we distribute by school based on our district projections in the student membership section of the survey, holding the DOE totals for each column by grade level and the total overall total. So this is a brief overview of the EdPlant survey, and this is all I have to present to you this morning, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any board members that wish to ask? Ms. Black, any questions?
Ms. Black, I just want to thank you. So I think you spent, we might have spent, what, an hour, an hour and a half I sat down with her? Because I wanted to really understand what this is, and, there's a fly flying around, sorry. But I really appreciate you taking an in-depth look. I zoned in on a couple of different areas, and you were so knowledgeable, and I'm just so thankful for the insight and the information you gave me. So I appreciate the presentation and the very detailed report of all of our facilities, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Ms. Jenkins? Good, Mr. Trent?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Black. We appreciate the opportunity. Ms. Hahn, did you have anything to say? Are you good? All right, thank you. Next up is going to be the Alternative Learning Center Drug Diversion Program presentation.
Board members and the public, I just wanted to share that this next presentation is one of the tools that we are looking at in our response to our discipline issues that we've experienced this year. So if we decide to move forward, this will bring this back to you as a, on the board agenda and that kind of thing. This is information sharing today.
Great.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Misty Bland, and I'm the Director of the Alternative Sites for Student Services. First, I'd like to say thank you to the...
Put your microphone really close to there, I guess.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to say thank you to the board and Dr. Rundell for allowing me to speak to you today regarding a possible drug diversion program for Bavar County schools. So the first thing before we start actually talking about it, I think it's important that we discuss, you know, where are we? So currently, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we had a one thousand fifty-nine students placed on a two-to-ten-day suspension pending investigation. Out of those amount of students, eight hundred and fifty-three of those students attended the ALC, which is eighty-one percent. Now, some of those students, the others that didn't attend, could have went back to their homeschool, maybe home education, Bavar Virtual. And out of those eight hundred and fifty-three students, four hundred and sixty-seven students attended the ALC for drug possession, use, or alcohol, which is fifty-five percent of those students. And I think it's important to add that eleven of those students were elementary students. Out of those students that were sent to the ALC for drugs, eighty-six percent of those students are first-time offenders. Sorry about that. So I think it's important that we look at the Alternative Learning Center. So I talked about what the data looked like in twenty-two, twenty-three. So now let's talk about the actual ALC numbers. So in twenty-one, twenty-two, there were a total of three hundred and eleven students sent to the ALC for drugs and alcohol. This year, forty-one for out with alcohol and four hundred and twenty-six were for drugs. So that's a total of four hundred and sixty-seven. And I think it's important to notice that that's a fifty percent increase from last year to this year.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Just in regards to the drug part of this? Is the majority of this coming in the form of vaping? Is that what you're seeing, most of these? I don't know if you broke down the data on what type of drugs we're seeing.
When you run the discipline report, it shows you what the student was caught for. So was it THC, was it a different type of substance? And I don't have the exact data, I can find out exactly. But when I looked at it, it was definitely in the ninety-something percent is just THC.
And vaping, like THC, is that?
Correct.
Okay.
So not tobacco. When it's tested, it comes in a vape, but then when they actually test it, it's THC.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bland, real quick, those THC vapes, those are preloaded, right? Or are we talking about when those kids get busted, that there's a, they're actually loading it? Does that make sense to you?
It absolutely does make sense to me. I mean, we do have kids that are snazzy enough to do it. So we've caught vapes where kids have made their own, put it in, but it's very difficult.
Right.
You know, there is some chemistry involved in that.
Okay.
The majority that we catch are bought, and they look exactly like a tobacco vape pen.
Yes.
You just have to know what you're looking for. But you can take it apart and test it and see that it's THC.
The reason I was asking is, so these students are getting a hold of preloaded vapes from either, from where? Where do they get those from? Like, the local? Not drug dealer, because it's being billed. Like, it's not a drug dealer, or they're grab, drug dealers are purchasing them. This is where I'm...
I can answer that from going to drug court, because I go to drug court on Mondays and talking to these kids that have been caught numerous times.
Sure.
For, you know, any type of substance. There's a lot of, obviously, medical marijuana, so that's out there. So their friend is eighteen, they have a license. That's where most, when you ask all the kids, because that's part of the questionnaire that we ask students, and that's the majority of where they're getting it from, and the majority is vape, vaping.
That makes sense. I just wanted everybody to understand, because those are preloaded vapes that are medical marijuana or something like that. It's not like the old school where the majority of the kids aren't rolling up marijuana and stuff like that and smoking.
Correct.
It's these vapes, and that is something that we may be able to help, get some help with outside of our school district, is the regulation of those things. So, thank you.
Because you really can't smell that, so that makes the other part.
Right.
You know, a long time ago, you could absolutely smell it, and now it's blueberry and strawberry and...
Yep.
Oh, wow.
All different types of flavors, and so if a kid, you know... All different types of flavors, and so if a kid, you know, takes a hit of a vape and blows it in their backpack, you would have a hard time. You might just say, "I smell a blueberry smell," but it would take a second.
Yeah. Thank you for that, Ms. Bland. I just wanted some clarification.
Sorry about that. So, I knew that you were going to ask me what other counties do, so I investigated five counties to see exactly what's going on in those schools. So currently, Seminole and Volusia County, they suspend students and put them in an alternative center or another approved site. Pasco County, Polk and Osceola County, they suspend students and put them in a diversion program, and they all have different types. They have the Tools, the Phoenix, and an Aware program. So what would this drug diversion program consist of? So it consists of four components. One would be an eight-week diversion program through Bavard Prevention Coalition, and we're going to talk about that in just a minute. It's called Better Without It. Group counseling, which is extremely important. It would be four sessions, one and a half hours. Family counseling, one session at one and a half hours, and then obviously a drug and alcohol test, which they would have to be negative. And I, I think it's important to add that one of the reasons that I wanted this program to be eight weeks is that depending on the amount of THC a student is doing every day, it could possibly take six weeks. So we want to ensure that when we do this test, there would have to be new use, so that's why it's in, why we have it eight weeks. So group counseling. The sessions are going to be face-to-face and max eight to 10. If you put too many kids together, you're, you're really not having group therapy. Upon enrollment, what would happen is the students would stay with that group and build that relationship, because sometimes that's the most important part, is just building that relationship and having someone to talk to if you want to use, and reasons they talk to each other, you know, this is the reason why we don't want to do this. So, and also the sessions will be 6:00 to 7:30 PM, so it's important that we're not disturbing the actual school. So the learning, this will take place after school. So what's going to happen? This is just like we would normally do. A student gets in trouble, gets caught with something inappropriate, drug, you know, possession or use or alcohol, they're going to be suspended two to 10 days, and administrative hearings held. The minimum we would, that a student would be suspended for would be five days, because that would be their discipline for getting caught with something inappropriate. The administrative hearing's going to be held at that time. This diversion program will be presented to the parent, and if the parent decides this is something they would want to do during that time, a Google Doc is going to be filled out by the administrator and sent to the drug prevention counselor, and that person is who's going to start it all. The goal of this is not to give the administrators one more thing to do, not to give the guidance counselors one more thing to do, because they, they just, they just can't do anymore. So once they fill out that Google Doc, that will be the last part that they have to do. Obviously, there'll be other steps that they can choose to do. There'll be a school stipulation conduct agreement signed that we are going to complete, that I'm going to put together, and this will be things like a backpack can be searched, and they can't say no to it, those type of things. If a student does not complete this program or doesn't allow this to happen, like their backpack to be searched, then they will be suspended and put up for a full expulsion. So completion, what does this look like? What, completion? The student's going to complete the Better Without It program. They're going to complete one family counseling session and four group counseling sessions. At that last session with the parent, they're going to complete the drug screening, which is around eight weeks, and that will be their final test. If they pass it, they'll get a signed paper. I'll get it back. It'll go to everybody so that they understand the student has completed everything that they need. If they don't pass it, they will be put up for suspension and a full expulsion, because they didn't complete the program. So let's say if they refuse the program. So the stu, this is just, so we're going to go back to just what we currently do now. The student will be suspended two to 10 days, and at that, they're going to hold a, a meeting after the investigation. If they decided the investigation, the student was, in fact, you know, they had possession of alcohol or drugs, they're going to be recommended for an expulsion, and they will, you know, per the code of conduct, they will have a change of placement, whether, and that will be, you know, approved based on what the parent decides, whether it's the ALC home, but that will be, you know, a parental choice. And at that time, earned return will not be offered. So let's say after August 2023, if the student gets caught again after they do this program, they will no longer be able to do this program. So this is for first time, you know, you made a mistake. Everybody makes mistakes in life, so this is your bump in the road. If they have a second offense, they wouldn't be allowed to do this program, and they would go to the ALC or another approved place, and no earned return would be given. So, this is the question of the day. How much is this program going to cost? For this drug diversion program is approximately $150,000. So we have to pay for the actual program, and we need two drug diversion prevention counselors. It's very important that we actually have a drug prevention counselor, because that's what they do, right? It, it's a, it's a niche, and they only get four sessions, so it's important that we, you know, get in there and we're able to really let them see that this is not what they wanted to do. So at this time currently, you know, we, we would have to figure out how to budget for this, because we don't have the funds for it right now, but hopefully we'll be able to find a grant as, you know, when this program gets started, that we will be able to, but to start the program, we're not going to be able to do that. So aftercare. It's important that we're following up with these kids, because the goal is not just to let them fly free and say, "Oh, you did eight weeks, and that's great." So the goal is to have scheduled visits with these students, just to ensure, do they need something? Because the, the program that they're getting ready to present to you, you know, mentoring, there's other pieces in it, because the goal is for students not to use for that day forward. So what are the benefits? I believe there, you know, there's many benefits than what I wrote down, but obviously right now, the ALCs, they're full, and if our students went back to school five days a week, we would have 38 kids in a class. And I, you know, I too believe that kids should be in front of a teacher five days a week. You know, I think that I've talked to all of you, and we all believe that. That's what's good for kids. So if the students that were, you know, we had a drug diversion program, we'd have less students there, and we'd be able to focus on violent behaviors, and this is going to produce, you know, academic continuity. So they're going to be able to stay with their school, stay with their friends, and hopefully, you know, keep achieving success, because when they leave there and they go to the ALC, there is some disconnect. There's some classes they can't get, they leave their friends, and it's, it's, it's a big deal. So at this time, I would like to introduce Stanley Britz. He's the Executive Director at Bavard Prevention Coalition to speak with the program Better Without It, the school-based diversion program. So he's going to talk about the actual piece that they're going to do besides the counseling and the drug test. And I will come back up if you have any more questions once he's finished.
Thank you, Misty. This is Stanley Britz, Executive Director of Bavard Prevention Coalition. I know a few of you. I've been doing school-based prevention in the county for about 15 years at different positions in different agencies, and so I'm excited about bringing this before you, and been doing the coalition actually concurrently with a lot of that. So who I have with me today is CTS Agency. We actually went out and hired a marketing firm to help us do some research, to understand, make sure we weren't missing key ways of reaching the new generation of youth that we are working with today across all the socio-strata. So I wanted to bring up Carolyn Capern and Greg Trujillo with CTS Agency, and we're going to walk through the Better Without It piece that Misty just presented to you as a component of this diversion program. And so in general, we're going to be implementing, obviously in addition to the group counseling and family counseling, a skill-based component as well as an experiential educational component to understand and make sure that the youths, the students, are actually absorbing why using drugs and alcohol are dangerous to them, but hopefully creating some cognitive dissonance as well, so the next time they're approached with that choice in life, they've now worked on this eight-week program and had this experiential component that helps them make the better choice. So I'll be here to kind of quarterback this with them, but I'm going to have Greg and Carolyn come on up and, and get started with the slides on this.
Thank you, Stanley.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, or good afternoon, Dr. Rindell and board members. It's a pleasure to be here with you. As Stanley said, my name is Carolyn Capern, and this is my partner Greg Trujillo. We run CTS Agency in Orlando, and we've had the pleasure of administering the Better Without It campaign for the past almost three years now, and so we are happy to walk you through it.
As Stanley said, we start with research and making sure that the messages that we put out are going to resonate with our target audience, in this case, Gen Z, more specifically, 13 through 24 is our audience for this messaging.
Yep. And we started this campaign in the height of the COVID lockdowns, right? So we had to take a bit of a different approach to traditional school-based prevention programs. You think of programs like DARE, where the kids are in the classroom, talking to the officer, talking to each other, doing these exercises. Well, with everyone at home when we started this, we had to think, how can we reach this generation that is already in these digital places even more so?
So just breaking down real quick, what we learned about Gen Z is they're generally watching different types of streaming video. Esports is very popular amongst Gen Z, not just watching, but also participating in. A lot of what they're listening to is EDM and K-pop. K-pop has taken Gen Z by storm, and the most, the most popular platforms right now are Instagram and YouTube that they're participating in.
Yep. But we wanted to go deeper than that, because I think most people almost intuitively know those things that we just said, or many of them anyway. So what really characterizes Gen Z? What are their actual values? Number one, their sense of personal identity stood out. They are enthusiastic about brands that reflect that sense of identity, but more than that, they are looking for authenticity and personalized approaches that reach them.
They have a very inclusive attitude. They dismiss paradigms that, institutions that don't meet their perceptions of how things should be. They surprisingly have, a lot of them have a co-pilot kind of relationship with their parents, as to where previous generations were kind of, you know, ready to leave the, leave the hen house.
Representing their helicopter parents.
Yes. They also prioritize teamwork and collaboration, and they believe in destigmatization of mental wellness conversations.
They have a strong sense of social responsibility. This is not news to most people who know a Gen Z-er, but social media has increased their sense of social activism, even if it's armchair activism, as we like to call it. They have this sense of a responsibility for improving the world, and a very entrepreneurial spirit, most of them.
And they're very active participants in the marketing ecosystem. They're one of the first generations that have been directly marketed to via their mobile devices, as to where most other generations previously got it through television, billboards, radio, where they're still getting it through there, but also very direct advertising. And a lot of this advertising isn't just one-way broadcasting anymore. It's a two-way conversation. So they understand a lot of advanced marketing techniques.
They're aware of their ability to not only be influenced, but influence others, and they desire that. And of course, they are constantly changing. As fast as memes change, as fast as video trends change, they are changing. So we have to figure out a way to keep up with that and figure out how we talk to this generation about drugs in a way that actually connects with them.
So one specific challenge about trying to talk to Gen Z about drugs on a digital platform is hardly any of them are actually looking online for information about drugs. They're not looking for the dangers of drugs. They're not trying to find this information, but what they-
At least not on social.
Yep. But what they are looking for is different types of entertainment, some education about what they're interested in, whether it's physical or mental wellness, and learning how to love themselves, trust other people, or communicate their feelings effectively.
So we try to drive those principles. We try to look for ways to entertain while educating, look for ways to be empathetic and be real with them on a level that we think that they are relating very well to. And most importantly, we are looking for opportunities to engage them directly as part of this, because this really is a very participatory generation. Ultimately, our mission is to empower Gen Z to choose a substance-free life. They already believe that they're in the driver's seat. What we want to do is help them make good choices in that driver's seat. We try to take that sort of mentality of, "All right, you're in charge. What are you doing with your life then? How can you make these, how can you make these positive choices and go beyond just saying no?"
So we designed a prevention campaign to encourage young people to make those positive choices, to shine a light on their strengths.
Yep. This is about finding ways to build on the principles of a theory called positive youth development, that really is about nurturing competence, confidence, connection, character, and compassion. These are the five Cs of, of positive youth development, and really it's about building positive relationships, supporting activities, and opportunities that develop their external assets and their internal assets. In other words, their family, friends, and school relationships, and their sense of honesty, responsibility, self-esteem, and ultimately, these are shown in various studies to lead to better academic performance, fewer missed classes, and fewer direct negative substance misuse-related activities. Our message ultimately is that young people need to know that their future will be better without substance use. And we are, in this campaign, taking an approach of helping them understand not only that they are better without it, but what better looks like, what it means to be my best self. These six icons on the screen are kind of our six pillars right now, talking about self-love, resilience, kindness, presence, commitment, and purpose as core attributes that help our young people be their best selves.
And we put each of those pillars inside of one of four messaging themes, which is your mind is better without it, your body is better without it, relationships and your future are better without it. And using those six pillars will tell how your body is better without it, for people that are looking for tips on how to better maintain their body, how to feel more energized and not sleep in so much, and how to, how to regulate some of these things that they're going through in their, in their mind, how to build better self-confidence, and how to interact with, with others better, not just relationships with their peers, but also with their teachers, with their parents, even with finances, and what their future is going to look like if they decide that they're better without it.
So the first phases of this, as we said, were heavily, if not exclusively, digital. We were on Spotify, Hulu, Roku. We were on Bally Sports during Magic Games, Podcast Network called Audiology, YouTube. We have gotten a large number of impressions, a large amount of visibility. Our following on social media is growing, and which, something we care perhaps most about, they are responding. They are leaving comments. They are sending us messages. They are saving our posts. They are signing up for our content team- They are signing up for our content teams and our focus groups. They're responding to surveys. So we know that the kids are paying attention now to what we're saying, even though we had to put it in front of them a little bit in order to get to that point. And that is what in fact brings us here now for another opportunity to put this in front of students in a different way. So the diversion program that Misty and Stanley were talking about, we'll go into the two specific program ideas that we would place before parents as choices for how to engage their students in this diversion program. The first is a content creation challenge. So many young people already see themselves as content creators, as influencers. There's a reason they all have their phones and cameras up in front of their faces. They're trying to create something on their own. So what we would do is provide opportunities for students to meaningfully engage with prevention education via this content creation process. So we would work with Bar Prevention Coalition and their counselors to provide a creative prompt, an evaluation rubric, and possibly incentives in order to get the students to produce a concept that creatively illustrates one of our key prevention messages. Facilitators, like creative professionals like ourselves, would be available to provide guidance to students throughout that process, so they actually get some, some learning and some growth from that. And of course, content would be expected to meet the guidance of the rubric that we gave, and if they provided us with something that met all the standards of the rubric, we would actually publish it on the campaign platforms with permission, of course. That's kind of the broad idea. We would give them examples, of course. They would be expected to have a process, so they'd have to show us a storyboard, which would get evaluated, or a script alternately. Then we would have to review it. They'd produce videos, show a draft, get feedback on the draft before it actually got released out into the wild. Very like it actually is working in a real sort of content-creating environment professionally, which is something that we know a lot of them are interested in. And then at the end, they would be expected to present those videos as part of the assignment.
Another idea is a Level Up Your Skills program. So the idea is to teach substance prevention principles in a way that also reinforces the benefits of focusing on a skill. So, and the idea is taking gamification principles, like RPG, role-playing style games, in, in some of the teaching techniques, and being able to provide a positive focus on alternatives to substance misuse. So facilitators would, facilitators would provide a type of quest, if you will. So an example would be something in woodworking, or auto shop, or music, or dance, or-
Visual arts.
-visual arts. And they would have weekly milestones within this project that they are to accomplish, which would unlock small incentives as, as they move along and accomplish this, this project. And once they've finished the project, they would also present to their class what they learned and what they were able to create or do.
So really, the whole principle behind this is almost in how you're framing this professional, essentially professional development activity, skills development activity, where you turn it into something that they are seeking, some sort of quest that they are looking toward. And if, if a student is particularly gaming-oriented, looking at that as a way to help them achieve wins as a sense along the lines of avoiding substance misuse. So that is a brief overview of the program. We're happy to take any questions about Better Without It. Stanley and Misty can take any other questions.
Ms. Jenkins, seems like you're grabbing your mic?
Yeah. I have the most important question. Is there really a Pantone color called Generation Z Yellow, or is that a joke?
Yes, yes, there is.
Fascinating. Are there any other Pantone colors for Generation Z? So my question, well, first and foremost, Mr. Briz, I'm excited to see you here. I, I recognize you and have heard about you throughout the years, and you know personally, I know somebody as well that worked very closely with you. I appreciate all that you do for our students here in Bar, and I'm glad that you're a part of this conversation. It makes me feel very trusting in this process.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. So I think my question might be for Ms. Bland, but it might be for Mr. Briz as well. But I just need a little bit of clarification. So we were talking about, this would be an alternative for a student to not get directly placed into an ALC, which is fantastic. That's what we've been talking about for a while here. So you had said if they get to the end of the eight weeks and they do a drug test and they fail, that, that they would move to expulsion. And so my, my hesitation there, and my, I need a little clarification, is if it isn't that they were necessarily on campus and, and tested and they were using it on campus, it feels a little extreme to me because if we're talking about a drug addiction here, right? Like, we don't necessarily expect an adult sometimes in eight weeks to, to make the right choices, and we're talking about children. I kind of would hope that maybe we would consider, like, continuing the program for them, or some kind of alternative to just directly an expulsion just eight weeks later. So I just want to throw that out there. And, well, I guess if you can talk to that first before I move on. If you can clarify that, if I'm, if I'm misunderstanding.
You haven't misunderstood. So normally, if a kid gets caught with an inappropriate substance, right, we do the hearing, they go to the ALC. If it's their first offense, they get earned return. During that time, they get tested, and if it is positive, then they remain, the earned return's taken away, and they stay at the ALC for the end of that stipulation-conduct agreement, which is usually when school is out, depending on when they start. So it's not that we can't do that, but that is the consensus that I received, talking to other people, talking to principals, talking to assistant superintendents, talking to parents, talking to other people about it. It's not that we, we can't change that, but I, I guess the, well, I'll just tell you, the feeling behind, the majority of the people's feeling behind that is we're giving students a chance to stay in their school environment, not be sent out that if they don't do that and they get in trouble, just like we would do anything else, we would use this, like, instead of going to the ALC, this is like the ALC. You did receive punishment, correct? You were, this happened, and if you were at the ALC and you got caught with drugs, you would be a full expulsion. So this is the same exact thing, except they're just not going to the ALC. They're going to be at school, it's just as serious, that if they do not follow that school stipulation-conduct agreement, there will be, it's just not going to be, you know, it's fine, and, and now you can go to the ALC because they had a choice. They could go to the ALC, but if not, I, I think we're-
So I guess, I'm sorry. So I, so I guess where I'm struggling, where I'm struggling is, I, I understand that, but if a student chooses to go to the ALC, or their family chooses for them to go to the ALC, even if they continue to mess up, they get to stay in an educational setting. But if a student or family chooses a behavior modification tool, which is the most appropriate thing for a drug addiction or a drug offense, and they don't clean up in eight weeks, then that educational environment option is removed from them. And so I kind of, it just, to me, that's a little bit unbalanced, and it's kind of like a risk almost for a family to make that choice. I don't know, it just, it just feels like there's like a gap there for me. And I'm not saying that the student doesn't deserve some kind of consequence, right? But I guess the consequence to me would then be an ALC placement. I don't know, it just, it feels like there's a hole there and, and imbalance for a family to make a choice. And we want them to choose the behavior modification program-
Right.
-because we think that's the right option for them. I, I don't know, it just seems, it seems risky for a family.
And I absolutely understand that. The, the only piece of that, that if they were at the ALC and they did not, there was an issue with the stipulation-conduct agreement, the same thing that if they're at their school, they would be placed up for an expulsion. So if they, there's drugs, or they don't allow people to search them, there's a, you know, the stipulation-conduct, there's, you know, like 13 different items that they have to do. They're going to attend counseling. They don't do these things, they are placed up for an expulsion. So I guess the, the reason behind that is doing this diversion program is just as serious as it is if you were to go to the ALC. So if you don't follow the stipulation-conduct agreement while you are able to stay at your school, you would have the same discipline as if you chose to go to the ALC because there, that would be the same discipline. Obviously, the, if you were, it would still be for the, the stipulation date would still be the same. It wouldn't get longer.
Okay, so I, I definitely am like ignorant when it comes to this area, so help me out here for a second. So if a, like, I know nothing about this, so bear with me. So a student gets placed into the ALC, and it was for a drug offense. Do those students typically have a timeline of eight weeks to be retested? I guess the point where I'm confused is if the student is being tested in eight weeks because they're in this program versus because you're suspicious that they're using it on campus, that's where I'm a little confused. So how does that work if you were to choose the ALC route as a drug offender? When would you get tested? Is it randomized? Is that part of your contract? Is there a date on there, or is it if you're being suspected as using it?
It is random, but 86% of those students are being tested within the five-to-seven week window when they go there because first-time offenders receive earned return. So those kids are actually being tested earlier than our kids in this program is to be tested.
And then if that is positive, they are then expelled from the ALC?
Then they, that contract, that earned return, they don't get to go back to their homeschool and they are-
But they stay at the ALC.
-until the very end unless they complete something else, correct?
Right, so that's where the, the gap is for me, is they don't have earned return, so that's the consequence, but then they get to stay in an educational setting. And so I'm concerned that children who choose the drug-
Program.
-diversion program don't have that same opportunity. They have a higher threshold. So I understand that they're, they're able to stay in their school, and then, but to me, I don't know, it seems like the consequences is stricter for them when they're choosing the better and right, more appropriate option for them. Do you, I don't, I don't know if anyone kind of gets where I'm going with that.
I was going to talk to that, too.
Yeah, I would guess I would, so I missed somewhere, and I had to go back and look at it. So it's, when I first were going through, I was thinking, okay, if they don't pass their drugs test, or they don't finish their program, then, then they're going to the ALC. But we're not talking about them going to the ALC. Then they're, like, expelled, expelled. So, I, go ahead, because I, I have other questions, but-
Go ahead, Jean.
All right, so kind of the same disconnect. I like consistency, and I'm a math guy, so it's a flow chart here, so. And I did notice that of the, if you choose program, you fail the drug test, you're expelled. Okay. You choose, you choose the ALC, you fail the drug test, you're not expelled, correct?
Correct. You're just sent till the end of your stipulation-conduct agreement unless you do-
Right. So that's my, that's my disconnect, is, I, I know, consistency, consistencies, where, because you basically committed another expellable offense when you fail the drug test. So a question would be, how many times can a student commit an expellable offense before they're expelled? And it, as is explained, it just depends what program you choose. If you choose the drug program, one time, and then a second time, you're out. If you choose the ALC, it seems like you can fail multiple times and you, and you don't get expelled. True?
But the difference is-
I know the answer.
But the difference, though, Mr. Trent, is that at the ALC, they fail the drug test, they don't get the earned return.
Right.
But that doesn't necessarily mean they got something that kicked them out of the ALC. What would kick them out of the ALC to be expelled, expelled from the ALC is if they had it on them. When our kids are ALCs and then they get expelled, expelled, it's because they came on campus and they had it on them, or they presented as under the influence, right? If they just fail the drug test, it could be, they could be completely, at the moment, sober and not have anything on them, they just don't get the stipulation agreement, you know?
Correct. I'm, I'm willing you to finish because I, I know that.
Okay, okay.
Exactly. However, that, that's the questions that were going to be asked, and kids will find the loopholes, and they'll find, they'll find. So if you pass the tests and you go back to your school and you get caught for a second time, are both students treated the same if they had gone through the program and have gone through the ALC?
The student wouldn't receive earned return, just like they wouldn't normally. So they would not be able to do the drug diversion program, but neither one would receive earned return, just like normal if they were caught the second time, and they will place at the ALC until basically the end of the school year. It all depends on when you get in trouble, obviously.
So how many times can we, a student, visit the ALC? I thought there, I was always told there was a limit.
There is no cutoff, there is no limit at this time.
So every time they commit an expellable offense, they can just go to the ALC? So they're not really being expelled for an expellable offense? I'm just asking.
Well, there's, correct. They're sent to the ALC, and then if they complete an expellable offense there, then they're fully expelled. But at this time, we don't have a, a limit. I mean, there are some cases that depending on what it is, the Cessar violation, that a student could be fully expelled automatically. Those are very, very few in Farbit.
Very few.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, we have many times a, here's Little Johnny again at the ALC, seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade. I don't think the public realizes that. You know, many times it's, hey, there's a good stop here, here's a chance that we want to realize, hope you, you and your family realize that education's valuable, and instead of just kicking you out and expelling you, here's an alternative. That's what the Alternative Learning Center. But I, I'm not sure if we're aware that it means your alternative method is every single year, depending on what you get caught doing, which is, again, I don't think it's a good lesson. Some people would say it's probably not a good deterrent. I, I've witnessed teaching there, there are kids that have actually talked about failing the drug test because they did not want to go back to their homeschool. So regardless of the program, I really do believe we need to end of the road at some point for our parents and our students, otherwise this is going to keep going. So that's, that's, that's my concern. Regardless of the program, is it one and done, two and done, three and done, four, I mean, how many times are we going to send a student? I don't believe, I, I failed, I don't want to believe that a first-time offender I'm going to treat as a drug addict. Many of these kids have no idea what they've just done, and they just grabbed the pen and they did it, and, you know, so, you know, a deterrent may be enough, that program may be enough, but if they can, if they're going to game the system, they're going to game the system. Most kids don't want to be in, those students did not want to be in traditional schools, and they chose to, to act in a certain way to make sure they stayed at the ALC. I, I know students have talked about fighting and creating an issue at ALC so they could stay at the ALC because they knew they were, the drug test was coming up because then they might be able to go back to their school. So these are issues that have to be handled. I do believe students need to know, if I do this again, I'm out. And it just wasn't the case there. So I'm glad you're up here, and I know you, you feel some of the same frustration, but I hope we can handle that. Sorry if I confused some people in this.
I guess I have a different perspective of that, and part of that is informed by my last visit to the South ALC. And with, and, and they told the stories about the students intentionally doing whatever to have to stay, but the perspective was not, because let's just, let's just check on reality. If this kids didn't want to be in an educational environment, they would not take the ALC, they would just take the expulsion, and they would be not in a, in an educational environment, period. But what I, what I am hearing from the staff of our ALCs is that this, many of the students who do that, it's because at the ALC, they are in that second-chance environment where people encouraging in them, believing in them, trying, whereas when they go back to their home campuses, they're seen as the bad kid. And that when they come back home, it, there is a stigma attached. And so, yeah, hey, over at the ALC, I'm getting group counseling, I'm getting whatever. Back at, back at my home campus, I'm just the troubled kid, and, and there is that stigma. And we, we all have that tendency, you know, to do that. And but whereas the ALC teachers are, they have a room full of troubled kids, and they're really focused on trying to do that, and, and all of the, some of the, not all, but many of the distractions that are on their- on their home, home campuses are gone, because they have to lock their phones in the lockers on the wall and all of that. And so, some of the kids thrive better in the structure that is at the ALC. It's heartbreaking that they think that the best thing for them would be to get in trouble again, so they stay there. But to me, that, that perspective is a little different. So, you know, we can put a, I don't know what the legalities of it, I don't know if the board decided, we wanna have a final, you can only go to the ALC X number of times, but then what we're doing is, there's, they're not gonna be placed in an educational environment. ALC is not, not camp, right? So, but there are some, I think we'd need to look closer at, what are the reasons why kids do that? And how can we make their return home better? But back on the drug program, um, I, I'm tell you what, I'm fired up, I'm ready to, I'm ready to get something rolling, um, because the, you know, four years ago, we were talking about the vaping issue when we entered into the Juul litigation, all of that and vaping, but then just the THC in the vapes, that has just taken over. And, um, this is a huge issue, we've got to do something about it. To me, the, the main goal of this, you know, yes, we're gonna get their numbers down at ALC, it will give kids more consistent, um, you know, continuity, academic continuity, but, you know, I, sometimes as a board, we like, we need to back up and stay in their lane, what are, what is our goal, are we an educational institution? But we have to deal with this because it's on our doorstep, it's filling our ALCs, it's making our educational environments more difficult to manage, and so we have to tackle this. And I very much appreciate you bringing this to us, because in order for our kids to do better and to get it ultimately, I'm, you know, gonna just be an optimist, to get it out of our schools, it's gonna require support of our students. And this kind of support, I believe is absolutely necessary. I had a couple of questions. Does the group counseling always have to be held at the ALC or the ALCs, or if we have the numbers, because they're gonna be in groups of it, could we do it occasionally if we had it, that eight to ten number, could we do it closer to home for some students? Is that a possibility?
Anything's a possibility. The reason why we said to have it there, because it's, it's gonna be a distance for some student. It's going to be difficult for some students, so we're just trying to, you know, try to keep it kind of what we have now. So if you are in, from here to here, you're going to go to the south area and that's where you're gonna receive your counseling. And over there, north. Um, you know, in the beginning, our numbers are not going to be large, which is gonna be important, because this is the first time doing this diversion program and it's, it's gonna be a lot of work. So, which is why I called Mr. Britz here, because he's absolutely an amazing human. So, go ahead.
No, and I was just adding to that, it's, obviously when you're dealing with youth, it's not gonna be a one size fits all. So just having the options. If, if the student needs to go to the ALC, then that might be the appropriate move for that student and that family. If they need to do this drug diversion program, that would be the appropriate path for them. And as Misty is explaining right now, it is the first time we're doing this, so we're going to continue to build and, and try to fill in those gaps. Um, and I, I got where Ms. Jenkins was coming from as well, because those are things that the school district would have to decide, it's not necessarily part of our programmatic piece of it, as well as location. Low hanging fruit right now is the ALCs, cause you have control over those spaces. Um, but if something becomes more appropriate and available, and that's approved, then by all means, whatever works best for the students.
Yeah. Um, so, thank you. And I realize they're gonna stay with their cohort, so I guess, you know, it's not like, if we're gonna have a group of the last eight that came on, or five, you know, whatever, they'll have to stay. So it makes sense to maybe not be able to do them regionally, I, yeah, cause we'll have to keep them, the kids that start together, finish together. Um, I, I appreciate the idea of looking for a grant, I think we need to continue to do that, but Board, I'm just gonna put out the option, even though I, I had other ideas for our Juul litigation money, um, this is something that we could, uh, consider to do the, it's, it's a one-time funding, but it would fund it for a couple of years to get us started. Um, that's an option. I still, I, I think it might be good to talk to Dr. Rendell about the possibility, maybe of installing little bathroom things, but, um, go back to the content, um, if I could ask you guys, I, and I'm sorry if I did not write down your names.
Greg and Carolyn.
What, what, what was it again?
Uh, I'm Carolyn, this is Greg.
Carolyn and Greg, thank you so much. So I, the idea, when you were talking about students creating contact, content, was that actually the lesson, or is that like what you did to prepare the curriculum?
That would be the activity in this instance, yeah. Is harnessing their, their inclination to already be content creators, in a guided way.
Right. All I, when I was listening to that, all I was, kept thinking about was, you know, there's a, a graphic that shows about how you learn, right? And if you hear, you will retain about five percent, and if you write it down, maybe ten, take notes, whatever, but the highest is if you teach it to someone else, there's like a ninety percent retention of the things that you learn. That's what you're doing, is having the students teach, create something that teaches someone else the, so, man, how powerful is that?
And then they can use it to teach potentially thousands or millions of other kids if it's something that we, you know, that meets all the rubric check boxes and-
And then you're constantly fresh. You're constantly fresh, and so, whatever is in style, if you're playing a video from five years ago, the, three years ago.
Last year.
And, and that's a term that I, I probably have overused in talking to many people and presenting, but that cognitive dissonance really does mean something. So if you're teaching something and you're being rated on this and you created this, imagine something, regardless of the student we're talking about, played an active part in creating this, it's such a big part of their lives at this moment, the hope would be that when they're faced with those negative choices, again, something is gonna go off here. Yes, they're teaching others, but they're now an active participant in creating that lesson, so to speak, it means more to them. We have to have new approaches, that what we call chalk and talk doesn't work as much with certain students.
Right, right. I haven't heard chalk and talk, I've heard somebody say on the stage, you know, talked about frequently in teaching. So, I have to tell you guys a story. And I'll, I'm trying to keep this, these short, cause I've got a couple of things I wanted to mention, too. I, when I went to the ALCs, um, I guess I say this, we need, in addition to this, we need prevention programs, because we need things that are like this, that are gonna stop our kids from getting there to begin with. It's gotta be hand in hand. And student-led, when we're talking about vaping initiative, we took students up to Tallahassee, we had students, SGA presidents, go back to their campus and they were tasked with, find a way to communicate to your school about vaping, like regular vaping, right? This needs to be student-led. I love that this is going to use our students and, and infect them. I, the story I wanted to tell is, when I went to ALC, they told me a story about a girl who came in and they did, sometime, it was time for her to do her reading test, like the, I think high schoolers do reading one eighty or whatever, and she was eleventh grader and tested a fourth grade reading level, and Mr. Sejek said, hey, does this kid have an IEP, did we miss it? You know, how did she get to eleventh grade and we didn't know? And then turns out, they tested her again later and she was back on grade level, and they realized, she realized that when she took the test the first time, she was under the influence. And that was the big eye-opening moment for her, was realizing, oh my goodness, when I'm doing this, look what's happening, you know, to my brain.
I'm better without it.
Absolutely, so I love this message. And the final challenge I would have to the Board is, you know, we just talked about where they're getting it, right? Where they're getting it, from people, frequently, from people who have a license, who they can legally use it. I don't, I try to stay out of the political world, but the truth is, there, we are potentially going to face a vote statewide on recreational marijuana. I don't know where your personal stance is, my personal stance is against medical, uh, recreational marijuana use, and I think we have a strong case to consider, because if that passes, we are just going to make it more available for everybody in the state, which is gonna affect our students, they're getting it now, it'll be, even though it won't be available for under eighteen, it'll just make it easier, cause there will be more people that they can ask to pass it on, their parents, their friends, it will be so easy for the kids to get it. So Board, as, as people who have influence with other people in the state, I for one think that we need, and this is the last time I preach this sermon, maybe, um, I think we need to use our influence to communicate with people in the community, the effect of THC on our schools, on our kids, and see if we can help communicate that this is not gonna be a positive thing for the youth in our state, and it's not gonna be a positive thing for our schools. I think it will be a very negative thing, because we're having to deal with this already with it not being legal. Um, and like I said, that's out of our realm of our, as school board, but we are influencers on our own right, and I would encourage us to use that influence to, uh, when that comes next year.
Great points.
All right, I, I have some questions, and I just, just to get clarification on how this is working. So we have Brevard Prevention Coalition, and then we have Better Without It, and so I'm just trying to understand, what does this look like? A kid chooses the prevention method, they're gonna go, or the diversion program. And so at that point, is the coalition providing drug counselors, or are you guys, I'm just trying to understand the whole pieces, cause there's a couple moving parts here.
Oh, yeah, so the school district would be contracting, or MLU, or whatever, using, using our organization to provide that structure for the counselors and for the program facilitation, using the vendors that we have attached to that initiative, Better Without It.
Okay, and then with the Better Without It, you spoke about the fact that this is a three-year program, I guess it's been in existence for three years, correct? You created it?
The campaign piece of it.
Okay, the campaign piece of it. Are you working with any other school districts around the state?
For the campaign piece, not for the, not for a diversion program, but through the campaign pieces, we have presented it to different school districts.
Okay.
Tall, we've gone to Tallahassee as well, to present it to the state.
Okay, and then, um, for the social media content part of it, when they're creating these things, is that, is that being pushed out through their social media, your social media? Where, where does that information go once they create something?
So if the parents permit it and if the school district permits it, it would go on the Better Without It social media?
Okay.
Camp, yeah, it would go on the, those social medias to get the message out broader. If the children choose to post it on their own, that's between them and their families.
Okay. Um, so I'm a hundred percent in favor of obviously having some type of diversion program. We need that, that needs to, to exist within our county. Um, just seeing the number, the four hundred and twenty-six students that, that ended up in the ALC due to drugs, obviously is an indicator that that's the largest population of offenders, is drug offenders. So, um, I do believe that we need to do something here. I, again, I, I'm probably a little old school in my mentality, cause I would be what you would consider one of those helicopter parents who's raising two Gen Z kids, and fortunately, I, you know, I'm grateful that they are, they have chosen the path of staying clean and, and not doing drugs, um, and I hope that they continue that path for their, duration of their life. But, um, I think the, I love the counseling, I love the idea of getting them in and having the counseling, I love the idea of bringing the family in, I think it's an important, uh, for the entire family structure to be a part of that. The discipline needs to be consistent, though, cause it doesn't, it doesn't need to be, I choose this and my discipline is different, versus I choose the ALC and now at the ALC I can reoffend, 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 and there's nothing there. So I think those two need to fall in line to some degree, we need to have consistency there. I would like this to be, this is the option, that it, it is this or nothing. I mean, I would like them to be mandated to go through a drug prevention if they are testing positive. I don't think we should say to them, you can go to the ALC or you can do this. I think it should be, you, you're doing this, and then if that doesn't work, then you'll go to the ALC, kind of thing.
That's not me, that would be probably a Misty thing, but.
And obviously, that would be a board decision, but again, um, we would be taking that out of a parent's hand and saying, this is what you're going to choose for your kid. So we would have parents that say, um, I, I choose not to do that, and I would, I wanna homeschool my kid. And if that's what the board decides, then, you know, that's what the board decides, and I would be, you know, we would be fine with it.
This is a resource that our district would be making available to help a child who potentially is gonna go down a path of drug addiction. And so I would like to believe that our parents obviously have the best interest of the child, and, and that's where, that's where my heart is with this, I'm sure it's where everyone else's heart is with this on the board, but, um, and I'm only one, obviously, of five, so I just think, I think the either or, I think we should say, this is what needs to be done, and then go from there, as far as the, how we implement this, but that would be my suggestion.
But the benefit, to me, it's still very attractive, even if there's risk, it's still very attractive, because I can stay at my school. This is the only way I can stay at my school. So if you wanna stay at your school, um, this is what you have to do. If you want to have to ride a bus, get up super early, go have your phone locked away and all that kinda stuff for the next semester, then yeah, you can pick the ALC. So there's still quite an enticement and motivation to, you know, to do this beyond, you know, that, cause I mean, that, that's, to me, that's the biggest thing, is I can stay in my current classes, I don't, cause, you know, she talked earlier about some things that are not available. If you're in specialized classes, like CTE classes, uh, music, the only, I think the only fine arts classes they have, they have art, right? But you're, you're, you're not gonna be in band, you're not gonna be in choir, you're not gonna be in automotive, all those things, if you want that continuity, then you're gonna, you're gonna take this option.
I had a couple more questions, sorry, I had a couple more questions, just, as far as the counseling goes, is that in-person counseling, that is not online counseling, correct?
That's in-person.
It's in-person counseling?
So it's face-to-face with a certified drug prevention counselor, and it's an hour and a half long, and, you know, some of the, when they go to counseling, obviously it may be a little bit longer, because they have to explain this program, they're gonna be helping the kids, it's not just, here's the program, fly. So there's a lot more, you know, a bigger piece to it, that we didn't go in depth, but the kids are gonna be supported, you know, throughout the time, and the hour and a half is just the counseling piece. This is gonna take a lot of their time to complete this. So it's not just a, oh yay, I get to do this and it's easy, I mean, it is something that they're gonna have to think about and work at, um, to make changes, to be better without it.
Okay, and, and just to, and, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming this, but I shouldn't assume anything, but your recommendation is that we partner with the Brevard Prevention Coalition in order to bring this diversion program alongside our ALCs, is what, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
One hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I've done a lot with, uh, Mr. Britz and, you know, um, everything's always done a hundred percent, and, uh, he'll do the same thing with this as well.
Okay, thank you.
We were an active participant in helping to create Better Without It, you can see by the logos on the screen, but, um, so it, it took a few years, uh, to really get the information put together as a foundation for why this approach has been effective with young people. So we stand behind it as a messaging. And to add to what you were mentioning earlier, there is also the skill-building component that's on the slide presentation, that I think would also be key, because some students respond to that as well. So we're trying our best to, to have those options there, and there's an incentive to doing this, as was brought up earlier by, um, Ms. Campbell, you know, for those students that wanna stay at their homeschool and participate in those other programs. So the stakes are gonna be a little higher, obviously, to make sure they're successful in this program. Um, so it's an eight-week program, and yes, we're, you're gonna be tested at the end, um, and the consequences after that may be a little stricter, but this is an incentive, this is an option for you to have that benefit of being at your homeschool for all the things that come with it that you value.
If you don't mind, oh, great.
Sorry, we're, a lot of questions, now I'm good.
So, um, again, I heard you, you didn't expect the numbers to be large. I expect the numbers to be huge, because of just exactly that. I, I don't know too many students that would elect to go to the ALC versus sustaining their homeschool.
Not many.
No. So I, I believe you're gonna get all of those first-time offenders. Which also could lead to cohort, cohorts might be difficult, um, if you say you're gonna keep those together, because you're gonna be getting onesies and twosies added daily, weekly, right?
Correct, but they can start on this program, the drug counselor's gonna be, you know, having a conversation with them, and they can set it up and say, you're not starting this week, you're starting the following week, and your day's going to be Tuesday.
Yeah, so you can kind of group them together.
Right, so you can, and, but obviously, we're gonna work around families and parents, because this is, you know, this is what we do, right? Because it's, I think it's important that we have a partnership with the parents, um, because it's more than just in the school, they're obviously doing it outside of school, so it's important that we build that partnership.
And I did see the, the one-family counseling session, and, and I would really hope to see a, uh, a, one in the beginning and one in the end, instead of just a, wherever that one is, you know? The more we can get them to get, I'm assuming that you'd want to bring them all in at the beginning anyway, maybe that's not even called a meeting, but.
There will be an intake, so they are going to have a conversation with the parent, explain it. And, I would love for there to be eight counseling sessions and eight family counseling sessions, but I think this is a big job to start out with, and I think we need to make sure we But I think this is a big job to start out with and I think we need to make sure we don't say we're going to do more than possibly human, you know, humanly possible to do. But yes, absolutely, I think family involvement and having as much of family counseling as possible is where we need to start moving towards.
And I, and I do appreciate the, when I, when I heard there, there's a consequence, maybe a stiffer consequence of not choosing, or when you choose the program, if, because you're going to put a lot of effort, money and resources into it. But, but I do agree with the consistency because I think there should be a consequence for, for not choosing the program. And it probably needs to be equal in, in my eyes. So hopefully that's where we can get, again, as you can kind of see where I'm going, the old school of, we gave you the opportunity, it just can't be here forever. And, and the program, it, I'm trying to fight to not, I know I'm oversimplifying, but it seems like you get into a program, you get caught with drugs and you get to do a project. So I'm, I know there's more than that, but I'm just saying, I, we, I'm a math guy, not an narc guy.
Also, I, I didn't go into, you know, detail, but the school stipulation conduct agreement, there's going to be things that the student can't do while they're under the school stipulation conduct agreement. You can't get caught with drugs and then go out and represent our school while you're doing this because again, you're a representation of the district and the school. So there will be a few things that the student will not be able to do, but they'll still be with their classes, their teachers, their friends. But it, it wouldn't be fair to the students that are not being caught with drugs to just say, we're just going to have you go four counseling sessions and do a presentation. So that's also why I think the stakes are a little higher. But again, that decision is going to be a board decision.
Overall, thank you so much. You know, we, 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 we understand we need help in those areas and we're here for you. So I appreciate it, all of you.
So can I, I just, I need to circle back to where I'm struggling because it seemed like at first Mr. Trent was kind of on the same pathway and then took a major diversion. So, and I don't mean that offensively, I just mean your opinion is going a different way. You, you hear what I'm saying, it's just going a different direction. And I personally don't want the end of the road for our students. I want to pave a road to success for them. And so I'm struggling here because we have, we agree that the majority of drug offenders are going to choose this program because they get to stay in their school, right? But if they fail a drug test for using outside of school, off-campus, not having it on them, possession of them, they then are expelled and they are removed from the educational environment. But if we have, so essentially, we're going to see not only a reduction in ALC students, but we're going to see an increase of expulsions. Because let's be real, a lot of these kids are going to fail that drug test on the eighth week because it's not a foolproof thing. And to me, the solution would be to continue to offer support in some way with another consequence, a more stricter consequence to follow that. Because if you have a student B who can choose the ALC, which isn't delightful by any means, but then get tested for using off-campus, again, no possession on campus, and still stay in an educational environment, it seems as though that student has an opportunity to continue to be educated while the one who went through the drug diversion program doesn't. And I'm not comfortable with that. That doesn't make sense to me. Again, not talking about a student who's caught using it on campus, has it on possession. I just think it's unrealistic for us as adults to sit here and say, this 14-year-old who's smoking pot and vaping and outside of school is just magically going to stop because they went through this program for eight weeks. We want it, we want to capture them all, we want to divert all of it, but we know we're not going to. And so I feel like we're setting those kids up to fail and be expelled. And I don't think that that is what we should be doing as an educational system. I think there should be some kind of catch for those kind of kids that we expect that to happen and have some kind of consequence for them, whether it is to go to the ALC then at that point. But it just doesn't make sense to me how we're going to penalize a student for doing something off-campus. I, I don't know, it feels really, really harsh and strict and I feel like we're not doing right by those kids.
I absolutely understand what you're saying. One thing I would like to say is that when the kids are tested at the ALC for earn return between five and seven weeks, I think right now we're at a 94% pass rate, maybe 95. So the kids are actually passing in the, you know, in a much shorter amount of time. So instead of eight weeks, maybe five weeks. But I do understand what you're saying and again, it will be a board decision.
And I, I, and I, that's great and I'm happy to hear that. But that 6% of kids who are using THC outside of school, I just don't think it's right that we are ending their educational career if it's not happening on our campus. It just doesn't seem right to me. And I think we need to figure out how to deal with that, that disconnect there if we're going to then be offering this alternative program. As well as just the conversation about the choice for a parent to choose this program or the ALC, I think that there should be the right to the parent to make that choice because some parents might believe that, 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 they know what their kid's doing at home, let's be real, right? And some of those parents might go, this program ain't going to help them in eight weeks. I don't, I don't want them to get kicked out of school. I think they need a stricter consequence to go to this ALC or whatever. We need to leave that option up to that parent because they know, they know what's going on at home. Because again, I'm concerned about the fact that these kids are going to get punished for things that they're doing outside of school.
I'm sorry if this is like ping pong, but when, when we're talking about failing that drug test after eight, eight weeks, for example, pick, pick a date. I know Ms. Shanks, you say outside of school. We all know many of those kids just because they're not caught in school, they're vaping in school. So I honestly don't care where they're doing it at the end of that eight weeks. And you said you got 94, 95% pass rate, that's fine. And I don't believe we're, we're saying you can never learn again. Maybe this system and this structure is just not benefiting you because we still have other people to think about, which are other students and other parents. I mean, they're allowed to do Florida Virtual, right? If they're outside of VPS, it might, so, okay. Right, we're not saying you have to go out in, in the workforce. And if we're talking four, five, six percent of the, the small, the percentage that we're talking about to begin with out of our 70-some thousand students, I, I think we're going to service those, those children. So I, I appreciate that. I hope you have extreme confidence in your ability to rehabilitate or, or show, you know, they're better without it. And we're giving them a lot of options to continue their education. And, you know, sometimes just because we say, this isn't working, that doesn't mean you're not going to be successful in education. And it's not a matter of if, it's just when, maybe a few years later, they're going to be like, you know what, you're right. I didn't appreciate the structure of, of in-school, you know, and within the brick and mortar. And, and, you know, maybe I'll come back in or, you know, or go to a different district or do something. But, you know, we can't be all things, you know, to, to all students at all times. And we do need to show them that road, but it just can't be a racetrack where it's just the same thing over and over again. At some point, we have to show our, our, our students and our children an example that, you know, at some point, your consequences are going to lead to a dead end. It doesn't mean it's over, you're going to go somewhere else. So you got, we're giving them that option, multiple options. So I appreciate what you're doing.
Mr. Trent, so, I mean, it's clear, we, we have two different viewpoints on this. But where we do agree is, and, and there's two different, two different end results that we agree on, but we do agree that they don't match, right? They don't match each other because what I'm hearing from you, right? You, you want the other, you want the other option, but I want this option. But we agree they don't match and that's a problem for me, that they don't match. I, I don't, I don't agree, I don't, I don't want them to have an end and get kicked out. But we agree they don't match and that doesn't make any sense to me. That's inconsistent. I think we're going to have issues with families and, and mediation and all that stuff. I just, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, you're right, because where it could go is after they go through the whole ALC thing, they could say, hey, I heard there was a program.
Right, and then they'll say, you know, this family got this choice and then their kid got kicked out or, you know, vice versa. And so I think there needs to be a consistency. Again, I, I'm not advocating for the, for ending the road for the kids. But, and that's fine, we have different opinions there. But clearly there needs to be some kind of consistent consequence. But I, I am going to say just one final time, I'm concerned that I personally believe that this will result in, in either doing it this way or what Mr. Trent is suggesting, in an increase of expulsions of drug offenders for THC. And that's, that's concerning to me because that's not what we wanted to do in the long run.
Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. And so I, which is why we need to have the prevention campaign going alongside it so kids are hearing from each other what a bad idea it is to, to use THC. But I, thank you for providing the, that data on the, the kids who are doing the direct testing for and return because that's, that's, that's a positive sign. To me, I just feel like we, this is a second chance. I mean, it's, it's the pre-second chance, I guess, you know, not pre-second chance. It's a, just, it's a better alternative to keep them in. But to me, it doesn't, it, it doesn't matter whether it's something they did at home or off-campus because the goal of the program is to get them to stop. And to stop, you know, that, you know, yes, we don't want them to have to go to the ALC or get expelled. But the goal is to get them to choose from now and all eternity. And they may, they may revert at some point to choose a drug-free lifestyle. Because they're, I love, I mean, it is simple, you know, better without it, that, that's the goal. And so if the expectation is clear, just like it is for the kids who are trying to get an return, expectation is clear, you are going to get a drug test at such and such a point. They know what the expectation is, they're going to be getting as many tools in their tool belt to try to, to get, you know, to get past it, to get beyond it, to make better choices. Then they know it's coming. To me, that's, that is fair. And I appreciate that you've taken the time to really get input from all the stakeholders and from these other districts. Because, you know, you, you're out of mine, I'm like, I want to know what everybody else is doing. So I, I appreciate the data.
If I could just provide intermission real quick. Mr. Thornton is keeping the cafeteria open for like 10 minutes to see if anybody wants lunch because we have a session after this as well.
Yeah.
So if anybody here wants to take a recess real quick, pop into the cafeteria, grab some lunch.
You guys, like, I haven't had a chance to go through what I was doing, so I don't want to recess. So if you guys want to just, I mean, Ms. Campbell went and got her food. If you guys want to go, it's not, you know, it's, Dr. Rindell is going to bring this kind of stuff back to us anyway. I just wanted to get to my points. So one of the things I was looking at is, and I want to say thank you, Mr. Trent, you're actually the only person on this board that's actually taught at the ALCs and understands the rhythm of some of these students and understands inside and out what, the way they are and the way they behave and stuff like that. And I appreciate that perspective. You and I were talking before the board meeting today and I said how much I appreciate you because you're coming right out of the classroom. And that, from a former educator that stopped in 2014, I thought I had a really good rhythm with the schools, but I go back inside the classrooms when I substitute and it's like you're so, you're just almost disconnected because you try to do the old school thing. So I just want to say thank you for your perspective. One of the questions I wanted to know is, we have to make decisions prior to the next school year opening, right? And like, this is what I'm, what I'm, my question is, in regards to this program, how our discipline is done, all of those things. I'm guessing in my head that we're going to try to do something prior to the beginning of school? Is that kind of the target date?
The idea would be to implement this program this coming year. If we decide it is something we want to proceed, we have to identify the funding and then set up the processes. We have taken a lot of notes, we obviously need to kind of form up what an off-site stipulation agreement looks like when it's onsite. In fact, that's the term right now, when you go to the ALC, it's an off-site conduct stipulation agreement when you're onsite. So you're in school, but, you know, like Ms. Bland was talking about, there are conditions, you know, already in place. And a student might violate one of those conditions and violate their conduct stipulation agreement and then suffer whatever the penalty is now, at the ALC or if we do something like this at the homeschool. So we'll need a few more details to be worked out about what those onsite conduct, onsite conduct stipulation agreements mean, what they look like. Because if a family does choose this option, it's a higher risk because it looks like they could be facing full expulsion if they fail. But it's a higher reward because they get to stay in their homeschool. Now, they may not be able to access all the programs, like they may not be able to perspiculate extracurriculars, but they'd be able to take all those courses, you know? So, you know, that's something that, you know, it's a high risk, but it's, it's also a high reward. You get to stay and access your curriculum and maintain your academic progress and you'll see all your friends and all that kind of stuff. But the risk is if you violate, you're going to, you're expelled.
No, I appreciate that. So thank you. So I just wanted to make sure of that. And this is not, this plan is not implemented in any other school districts, what they have? Not as of now?
Not currently.
So we don't have any metrics on its success or anything like that? And I'm not saying that it wouldn't be because I love what you guys are doing, I was just trying to get through my notes. And Ms. Bland, how many students with the drug offenses will roll to ALC at the beginning of next year? Is there a percentage? So we have like, we finished the year with 150, say for instance, and we have 100 coming back? I mean, what does that look like?
I would have to get back to you on that, I don't have that data. However, the goal would be to start August 2023. So the students that are currently there would not be able to be in this program. It would start August.
So our goal is, is to take all of the offenses that were before, find a way to not have them return to the ALC, but have some sort of a path or have them earn return?
They're currently under a stipulation conduct agreement. So they would still be under that stipulation conduct agreement. We would not go back unless that's a board decision. But we would continue because we'd have to hold these meetings again. A hearing was held with parents, IEPs, you know. I'm not saying it can't be done if that's what the board chooses. However, they are under a stipulation conduct agreement and the goal, I believe they should finish that stipulation conduct agreement.
So I think part of, I'm sorry, it keeps carrying on. I think part of what we're looking at is creating a program moving forward. But the other issue we have is, is we have an emergency need to, for capacity and all these other things right now. Because if these kids come back, we're automatically going to be already almost at capacity. And if we were looking at creating it to where they come back off of being online over out there, there needs to be more here. So that's all, I just wanted to kind of get through that. Did you want to say something?
Well, and Ms. Bland would agree with that. August is a wonderful time to be teaching the ALCs as far as numbers. Many of their stipulations run, run out at the end of the school year. So it's, it's very small. So we wouldn't, it would not have an overcrowded, am I misspeaking, Ms. Bland?
The numbers have increased, but I think in the past, when I first started this position, we were starting with 30, now we're in 60. But it's, but it's absolutely doable because those kids, you know, they're not going to be in the ALC that long in the alternate learning center and they'll be going back to their homeschool.